Welcome. Welcome to the May 13th, 2014 Board of Selectmen meeting. We've got a rather thick meeting agenda tonight. But we'll start with the minutes of the previous meetings. April 8th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 8th, 2014.
Second.
All in favor? April 27th.
Motion to accept the minutes of April 17th, 2014.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? And then April 22nd.
Motion to accept the minutes of April 22nd, 2014.
Second.
All in favor? Done. Public hearing is next on the application for a malt liquor license renewal. William Coppersmith, Jr., doing business as Fisherman's Catch. I don't see anybody here, but Bill is not here. So we'll just have to pass that by until the next meeting if we can make it, so.
I don't think we have to do that, too.
It's a redo.
Is it a redo? Okay. I've looked at the material connected with that, and it's fine with me. Anybody have any questions?
Chief, we good with the inspection?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
We received no complaints. There are no issues. All of the requisite life safety inspections have been completed. And at the staff level, we're recommending approval. This item, even though it is a renewal, is subject, however, to a public hearing comment. But we have no issues of record, correct, Chris?
No.
Okay. Any public like to comment on this? No comments?
I think you have to open a public hearing.
Yeah, I just did.
I didn't get there.
Okay, well, I probably didn't say it loud enough for you. I'm opening a public hearing. Do you have anything to say?
No.
Anna? Okay. Motion to approve?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing closed.
I'll make a motion to renew the malt liquor license for William Coppersmith, Jr., doing business as Fisherman's Catch.
Comments? All in favor? All right. Renew business. Consideration appointment of Joanne Stinson as zoning board of appeals member.
Ms. Stinson is here this evening, and I think it's customary to maybe give a brief introduction and to tell the board about your interest in the zoning board of appeals or community service and/or.
Absolutely. Do I need to go to the floor?
Yes.
Good evening. Joanne Stinson. I'm here to apply for the zoning board of appeals. I had recently expressed interest in volunteering for something in the town of Raymond, and Louise Lesser was gracious to sit down with me and explain that there were great needs for people to be on some of the boards. And I had had, as an applicant, I had some experience with the zoning board of appeals. It was very educational. I learned a lot through it and thought I would have some interest in joining the board if I could be of service.
Anyone have any questions?
This does come recommended from the board, is my understanding, the zoning board of appeals. Is that correct?
That's correct. Unanimously voted to recommend her appointment.
What is your address? That's one of the things you're supposed to give us when you get up to the.
I apologize. 51 Haskell Ave. in Raymond, out on Crescent Lake.
Just make sure it's Raymond. Any other questions?
So, Joanne, what do you know about the zoning board of appeals?
I know that we're there to listen to appeals to the zoning ordinances, ordinance for people's properties, and to consider based on the ordinance as written as to whether people can get an appeal to the standard setbacks and variances under the ordinances.
You have a lot of reading ahead of you.
Yes. I enjoy school. I like to read.
That's good.
Technical reading.
You have technical reading. Yes, you do. Well, good. I'm glad to see someone step forward and fill that vacancy.
You've come well highly recommended, so.
Thank you.
Do we vote on this?
Yes, if you have no other questions.
I have no other questions.
I make a motion to accept zoning board of appeals recommendation for Joanne Stinson as a new board member.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next, an application for use of town property for the UCAN 5K. Brenda Deon.
Ed Gagny is here at her place.
Hi, my name's Ed Gagny, nine Ashley Way, Raymond. And I was here to thank you folks for letting us use the town's facilities last year. They went off very, very well. And now I'm asking permission again to utilize the town, the Sharon Gagnon Park in the streets. Last year's event went very well. This is a race in honor of Candace Wolston, who was a volunteer in this town. She's done a lot for this community, a great woman. She passed much too early, December 25th, 2012. She left a couple of boys and a husband, a lot of, you know, a lot of family members. She did a lot for the community here, so I thought it would be a good idea if we did something kind of to honor her, her life here. Her name was Candace, so we came up with the name UCAN. It's worked out really well. I'll tell you, this town has a tremendous group of volunteers, and it's the same people all the time, you know, that do the softball and the soccer and the baseball. And I sent out an email about 3:00 in the morning to both three families, the Meters, Deons. You know, and within hours, I had all these people wanting to help out. And Kathy and Bruce have been great for the fire department. They were outstanding. The VIP, the volunteers that we hired, they came in, they were amazing. It was just, it's really a nice way to remember. Last year was a big success. They say if you do a 5K and you get 50 to 100 people, that's a big success. And last year, we had almost 400. Basically, we jumped on the backs of the old Raymond Founder's Day path that Louise and Bob Payne put together. And from there, we just kind of built on that. At that time, there weren't anybody on the committee that actually had ran a 5K before, organized one. And it was a lot of learning, but really, really happy that how it came out. So this year, we're hoping to, we're asking the town again for approval on this, and we're, whatever funds we make, it's obviously nonprofit. We'll give the funds back to the town. Last year, we donated some money for the playground and donated some other money for Wyndham Primary for their playground because that's where she was working. So we're gonna do the same this year. You know, we have a committee meeting at the end and try to find out where we're gonna put the funds, and it all gets back. Between Wyndham and Raymond, you know, we had a lot of, it was a lot of bad blood when we're trying to blend this RSU 14 and the schools and this, that, and the other thing. So I figured this is a good way to cross-pollinate the two communities, and I think we've done a nice job at that. So basically, I'm just asking once again for permission to do this and ask, you know, if you have any questions, I'll happily answer them to the best of my ability. A lot of people knew Candace. She was one of the founding people that, you know, fixed up the Gagnon Park to begin with and cleaned that up. So we're just trying to get back in her name and.
Some questions.
No, I don't know if we have any questions. We will work with you as we have in years past at the staff level to make sure that we do whatever we can to facilitate the event. As far as the staff goes, I don't think that we have an issue at all.
Chief, I saw our correspondence here from Fire Rescue to help. They were at 400 last year. Any surprises or any issues with that large crowd compared to what we expected?
It was a well-organized and well-run event, and hats off to Ed and the crew. They did a great job with it, and we were just extra people there, basically, so they did it all. It was great.
The reason we're here, really, to add hopefully a little clarity, is you have a public property use agreement that you require now, and this event is of such a size that it's outside of what I can approve on my own. So it's for you to know about it, for the community to know about it, and then the selectmen to sign off. There are various requirements which will need to be met, and I'm sure Ed and the group are very acquainted with those. And so with respect to insurance and leaving the park as you find it, cleaning and so forth, parking, traffic control, which you alluded to. So we would work with you to make sure that all those things were adequately satisfied. And, but that's the reason you're seeing it is because of your policy, which I have here for your signature should you approve this.
Any further questions?
I make an enthusiastic recommendation that we approve the public use agreement for the UCAN 5K.
Can I enthusiastically second it?
Do you folks enthusiastically gonna participate?
All those enthusiastically in favor.
Thank you. I have another meeting in Wyndham I have to go to right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, request for policy clarification regarding official DVD version. Danielle?
Recently, the planning board had a training session.
I think you should get up as well.
Recently, the planning board had a training session with the town attorney to kind of go over some different items like procedural policies and FOAA-type items. And one of the questions that came up is that the town has kind of adopted this video recording or DVD method for capturing its meetings. And under FOAA, any gathering of three or more of board members constitutes a meeting and needs to have public access to it. So one of the questions is because the planning board and zoning board of appeals both utilize sidewalks, how it was that we were going to capture those meetings? And of course, if it's not available, you would just assume that that's kind of like the policy, but instead, the town attorney recommended that really we should show this up and clean off the language so that we make it clear that, you know, the video record, when it's available, is the official record. And if not, then we refer to the written minutes because it's easier for me to go on a sidewalk versus someone with a camera, especially when you're on some of these more natural terrains. So just asking for a policy clarification. In the E-Packet, you'll see some drafted language that inserts those clarification points.
So Danielle, on the information we have in the packet, I'm going to make the assumption that the attorneys added the yellow highlighted language to this paragraph?
They recommended, yes.
Okay. For those of you in the audience, it's a short thing, so I can read it and highlight it to you. The original read, "As of December 19th, 2006, the Raymond Board of Selectmen voted to create the policy that the video DVD recordings of the meetings would be the official records of those meetings, and any written minutes would be supplemental to those DVDs, period." What has been added in the second line where it said official records of those meetings and any written, it has been changed to the official record of those meetings when available and any written records. And then at the end of the sentence, unless they are the only record. So it would read now, "As of December 19th, 2006, the Raymond Board of Selectmen," I guess it would be as of whatever today's date is. As of today's date, the Raymond Board of Selectmen voted to create a policy that the video DVD recordings of the meetings would be the official records of those meetings when available, and any written records, minutes, would be supplemental to those videos, DVDs, unless they are the only record. So in the case of a sidewalk, the written record would become the only record.
Correct.
Okay? And it would be in the standard minutes format, I would assume. So for those of you who don't have that in front of you, that's what we're discussing.
Any other questions?
Sam, I would ask if there's anybody in the public that wants to speak to this.
Yes, of course. Yeah. Yes?
Thanks, Pete Levitt. To Levitt Road. Just, I believe that the meeting that Danielle was referring to was the workshop where they talked about conflict of interest. And I learned a lot in watching that meeting. And one thing that occurred to me was all of the boards in the town of Raymond should regularly have that same talk. So it would be not just the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the select board. I found it very educational. I also found a little bit of conflict between one town attorney and another town attorney's interpretation. I know that Mr. Reynolds discussed at one point about having to get up and actually, if you're recusing yourself, leave the building. And I believe that that kind of was refuted by one of the town attorneys. But at this workshop, actually, the other town attorney was saying, no, actually, that would probably be the best thing because you don't want to have any influence. So even your presence could possibly influence individuals if, in fact, there was a conflict. So I learned a lot of good stuff about it. I just make that recommendation that all the boards do that. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, well, then let's move on to the next.
We need to decide whether we're gonna vote on this.
There's no vote on that, is there?
You have the changes.
It would be changed.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the new changes to the policy for the minutes of the meetings as recommended by the attorney.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question, too.
Oh. Raise the other hand.
Danielle, oh, sorry. Danielle, this is only for the select board. Will the other boards be reviewing this policy as well?
Yes, I'll bring it back to them and have it as an agenda item for each board subsequently so that they'll be able to adopt the amendments as well. I'm sure they will, but, you know, give them the opportunity as well.
Because I don't believe that all committees have made the DVD and video their official.
The governmental boards, zoning board, planning board, and selectmen are the three governmental boards that does most. Others, you know, do theirs as well. But they, but we do record all of them at one point or another throughout the year.
I would suggest that the board of selectmen would be the policy-setting board with respect to such decisions. And, you know, it'd be good to have them make that, you know, have that decision, have that discussion, to understand, you know, the reasoning behind it, but if they haven't done that already. But I think it's something the selectmen would decide.
It makes it consistent among all the boards.
Correct.
I think as far as if a committee has adopted the video DVD policy, they would need to make this change for clarification. But if the committee does not use that as their official method, then they're already using the written one. They wouldn't have to adopt this if they're not using video as their primary. Right? It would only be the committees that use video as their primary that this would be brought to.
Encouraged.
Or are you saying because?
I'm just saying procedurally, you know, you want consistency across all the committees, I think. And procedurally, I think it's a selectmen decision. And so it's nice to get feedback and input from the boards and committees. And I think that's how this came about, perhaps. And so, but I think the selectmen would be the deciding body.
So they will just be told it's been changed?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying?
In a manner of speaking, yes. That's what I'm saying.
This needs to be adapted to their policies.
It keeps it uniform.
Right, okay. I'm good with that.
Okay, any further questions? We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay. Presentation, final report from the Economic Development Task Force. Ralph and Elisa Gifford.
Ralph Olson, 17 Brook Road. The select board had formed a Economic Development Task Force, and so the report itself has been handed over, so we're just gonna go through a little bit of a summary of it tonight. But to start off, I'd like to thank the members of the task force, who were Elisa Gifford, Teresa Sadak, Sharon Dodson, Lori Forbes, Mike McClellan. Thanks also to Carolyn Paris from GP Cog. But a special thanks to Danielle Loring, who did a lion's share of the work on the survey and things like that and helping to pull a lot of the things together for us. And probably wouldn't have come together as quickly as it did without the work that she put in there, so. Just as an overview, the select board appointed the committee to look at the best practices for supporting business retention, expansion, and attraction, barriers to business expansion, including town regulations and ordinances, and organizational models to promote economic development, including staff capacity and budgets. The committee, when we met, we looked at regulatory bodies and what steps needed to be taken, who performs the functions. This included the select board, code enforcement, planning board, appeals board, town planner, public works, DOT, Cumberland County Commission, legal review, and other town committees dealing with land use. I looked also at regulations, economic development models, Raymond businesses, and performed a survey to get input from the businesses in the town on what was working well, what problems they were encountering, and suggestions that they would have on areas that we could improve. We also looked at business practices for promoting a business-friendly climate. At the end of the day, the final recommendations that we came up with were, number one, to create an economic development advocacy, either a staff or a position, you know, ultimately or initially be just a position, you know, if staff was needed because development grew, then that would be down the road. Wasn't looking at adding a new position, but having that take it on inside the town works. But what this would be is a point person that could guide an applicant through the various regulations, the various boards that they've got to work with and things like that. And kind of to steal some words from Donald Brumfeld, there's things that they know, things they don't know, and things that they don't know, they don't know. And what we're looking there is trying to get them the information they need so that they can move through, move through the process, know that they've hit all the spots, and move through the process to get things done. Because what we were seeing was frustration in them not knowing what the regulations were and not knowing who they're supposed to see. So if we could have someone to step in and take care of that, then that helps smooth the way for them and making sure that they're not gonna get frustrated along the way. Second recommendation was to appoint a business advocacy or an advocacy board, which would be comprised of a cross-section of stakeholders, including developers, town officials, citizens, local businesses, local business workers and/or owners. Another recommendation was to host or support networking opportunities for businesses, also provide access to information about business-related workshops and seminars such as funding, grants, and things that may be available to businesses. Another recommendation was to make more ways to make Raymond a more business-friendly while maintaining a high quality of life. It's one of the things that came out in the survey is that, you know, the businesses that are here wanted not only to, you know, wanted some on the business-friendly side, but they enjoyed the fact that there was a high quality of life here. And they didn't want to turn this into just an industrial zone, but wanted to maintain, you know, maintain the nature that we've got here, too. Another recommendation was work on the town branding and be able to market Raymond as a friendly, a business-friendly area as well, so we can try to attract some of that business coming in from Wyndham or whatever, but in a controlled way. Another was to review and update the expiring comprehensive plan, especially with regards to parking and land use in the commercial district. Some of the, you know, we found that some of the grants and things that exist out there depend on having an access or an active comprehensive plan. So it's not necessarily redoing the whole thing, but looking at that and seeing what needs to be updated and changed in there. And another recommendation was to investigate potential TIFs to help in any infrastructure work that may need to be looked at or need to be done so that the burden doesn't fall back necessarily, you know, onto the tax rolls, but be funded through TIFs and things of that. So that's the, you've got copies of the full report, so.
We do.
Any questions?
We'll be reviewing them for a while, and I do appreciate very much the work that you've put into it. I happen to know about that because I get a report of it after every meeting. So, any questions?
Nope, I'm on it.
You're on it.
I'm on the board.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Ralph, what was your biggest surprise?
I think it was the fact that, you know, there was somewhat of a mixed reaction from the people out there as far as what some of the requirements and things were, not really knowing a good point to go to or where to get some of the information, and really kind of finding their way through the labyrinth. And one of the attachments in there is kind of a flow chart on what the approval processes are. And if you kind of look at that, it's not a, it is not a smooth line. You're going here to here to here to here to here to here and here and trying to get back someplace. And it's easy without someone kind of guiding them along there to miss a step in there. And that's where the frustrations came in. At the same time, they liked the character of the town, so they, you know, but I think the other thing that was a big positive that we saw was of the surveyed people, the businesses in the area, about 60% were considering expansion or growth, so. And the big limiting factor that a lot of them saw was on the parking side. So I think that's a big issue that's gotta be looked at.
Any suggestions come out of your conversations on parking?
Well, quite, we really didn't delve into that side of it. We had a limited amount of time to get this done, you know, put together, and it really wasn't, the task wasn't to say, here's what should be done in the ordinance. It was to highlight where there were issues. And that would be either for some follow-on work or whatever, but it was to highlight where the problems were so that they could be looked at.
All right. Any other questions?
I don't know if any other task force members want to say anything to us as they hide in a bed.
I guess the only other thing that we would like to do, we have the report in form ready to go on to the website, and the report itself was handed, you know, was handed to the select board, and it's just a question of whether there's any objection of that going live as a document on the website after this meeting.
I have read it, but I haven't done any editing, or I don't know if it's, if anybody's been through it a few times, but if the committee is ready, I'm fairly comfortable with that.
Well, I'm comfortable with accepting it. I think that we do need to review it and go through it bit by bit and.
But to give it to the public, I mean, it's a public document.
Absolutely. Give it to the public.
No, I'm not gonna read the full report. Really, I just have a few brief.
Who are you?
Name and address, please.
My name is Elisa Gifford. I live at 546 Webb's Mills Road. I particularly want to thank Ralph for all the work that he's done, his attention to detail, and his knowledge of running a, it's not a committee, a task force. And also to Lori Forbes for her editing and writing, and particularly to Danielle, who, you're right, she really did the lion's share of the work in sort of guiding us through the process. We hope briefly that this report lends strong support to the continuing dialogue among business leaders and owners, entrepreneurs, developers, citizens of Raymond, and town officials. May the town move purposefully and with positive forward impetus. Please read the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph.
There's a lot to digest in.
Yes, there is, and an awful lot of background. Yes, there is, and an awful lot of background material, too, that needs to be reviewed.
One thing that did come up was, people were talking about quality of life, and I think it was Sally Hickel, Alyssa, excuse me, a saying, everybody's quality of life is something different. So it's trying to fit within that, everybody's got something different that they want.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions from the public? Yes, Peter.
Peter Levitt to Levitt Road. I have not digested all of this yet. I started looking at it just this afternoon. It represents a lot of work. I think it's very professionally well-done. I don't necessarily agree with all the conclusions that are advanced in this, but certainly I do respect the amount of work that was put into it. I've authored a few of these things myself, and you can't do it without a team, so I congratulate you for that. I think just a couple of quick things. Quality of life is important. I've been in healthcare for 35 years, so I can tell you that the quality of life is very important to all of us. I think that one of the things, and it may be said in here, but I think needs to be reinforced, is quality of place. And, you know, you might say that's the environment, you might say that that's the fact that, I believe what I did read in here is that the second largest business in the town of Raymond is property ownership. And that would go directly to the environment or the quality of the place. I mean, you can live in the most beautiful place in the world if you're paralyzed, and you've got to wait for someone to wheel you out onto a deck to look, to see the pond. You question just how much of a quality of life is there. That's up to the individual. But a quality of place is important. I'm not anti-business, and I'm not trying to discourage the growth of business. I just know that in times when, especially not during economic recession, but actually during the recovery, if you look at history, that's when the environment is probably the most vulnerable, that's when regulations start to get picked apart. I'm not someone that loves to over-regulate everything, but I do know that the consequence that we deal with in the environment is primarily related to human activity. So I don't know that that's arguable, you know, but maybe if we weren't around, then nobody would be recording our activity. But we are here, we do record our activity, and what we know is it has that direct impact. So I just caution everyone. I definitely would endorse Raymond being open for business, just not at the expense of the quality of place.
Right. Thank you. Can't argue with that.
No.
Sam?
Yes. Charles Levitt East Raymond, he's the nice brother. I found all sorts of unsettling issues. I've had time to read the report, it is online if you go to the e-Packet, so it's basically available to everyone in the community to read. It's not that complicated, some of the data is fairly easily digested. The survey is not great, sample size, so I'm glad we didn't spend a lot of money on this, except for staff time and contract planner time, or great important council of government time. My biggest concern starts with the opening sentence, "The town of Raymond has done little to promote and attract business." As I have stated in the past, this view of my town and my neighbors as taxpayers is just plain wrong. We've invested millions of dollars on the Route 302 corridor, business corridor, with upgrades such as paving, lights, sidewalks, landscaping, and the all-important water line, including the failed economic development attempt at Chipco. All of this was accomplished while, up until this year, keeping taxes stable for resident taxpayers and businesses, which is also a quality issue for taxpayers, for businesses coming and moving to town. Tens of thousands of dollars have been spent on ordinance changes, in order to facilitate and clean up the process that we all know needed work and will continue to need work. We've spent millions of dollars on fire protection and public works, a new station, apparatus, hydrants, staff, public education, inspections. The last time I checked, Raymond Fire and Rescue and Public Works serves and protects everyone in the community, businesses and residents alike. And this investment has lowered tax rates, the IOSO tax rates for all businesses and for individuals in the town of Raymond, property owners. Raymond has invested millions of dollars and volunteered time protecting and enhancing quality of life issues and values. The overwhelming choice in your survey, 72% of all the businesses surveyed, said that Raymond's best feature was its quality of life. Indeed, the four highest-rated results in the survey pointed to quality of life issues. So it might be how you interpret those, but I don't think it's about spending money in order for small businesses to make money. That's a private endeavor. The biggest other concern I have is the TIF. I know I'm going to be gavelled for over my three minutes. I'm very surprised and concerned, because two members of the committee were instrumental in helping both a state representative and the chair of the Budget Finance Committee in getting a TIF established in the town of Raymond. That TIF originally was projected to put $2.5 million into economic development in town of Raymond, including loans for private businesses to expand and facilitate. So the fact that this omission is glaring in this report, that we're not even acknowledging the present TIF, which will probably go well over the $2.5 expected million dollars, it's probably going to be more like $4 million, just seems to be that there needs to be maybe a lot more work done. Raymond can do much better. Thank you.
Anyone else? Good with it? Okay, the report is accepted, then. Thanks again, Rolf, and all of the people that worked with you. Next on the list, consideration and award of bid for contract auditing services. Nancy?
There were four responses to the town's RFP for audit services. They came from well-established firms with many years of experience in auditing municipalities, special districts, et cetera. They were Roy and Associates of Bangor. They proposed $8,000 a year, $8,000 for the year ending 2014, $8160 for 2015, and $8323 for 2016. Ron Bollier and Company of Portland proposed $8,000 a year. Smith and Associates of Yarmouth proposed $6,775 per year. And RHR Smith and Company of Buxton proposed $6,200 a year. In comparison, the fiscal year 2014-15 proposed budget sets a cost of $8,000 for the audit, and the cost of the audit for the fiscal year ending 6:30 2013 was $6,875. So both those figures are contained within those proposals. The audit committee consisted of Joe Bruno, Rolf Olsen, Don Willard, and myself. We reviewed the proposals and narrowed the selections down to Smith and Associates and RHR Smith. Smith and Associates is the town's current auditing firm. They have been for many years, and they've done a fine job for the town. And so for the small price difference between RHR Smith and Smith and Associates, the committee would like to recommend that we retain Smith and Associates. We didn't just recommend that we retain them, but we also suggested that Don Willard speak to Wayne Smith of Smith and Associates, and attempt to get him to lower their cost, which they were happy to do. They lowered their cost to $6,200 a year for the next three years.
Wow, great.
Good, good, good.
And so, what the committee is hoping is that the board will accept the proposed Smith and Associates firm.
Questions? Seem rather obvious.
The only thing that I would add is that it was determined by the committee that there would be a significant learning curve for any new auditor, a significant investment of staff time. And so, given our favorable experience with the current auditor, and that this was a cost-savings, more than most anything else, proposal, we want to avoid that difficulty and stick with the current auditor if we can.
Okay.
Do we make a motion? I make a motion that we stay with Smith and Associates from Yarmouth for $6,200 for the next three years.
Take it. Call in favor? Thank you, Nancy.
Then can I get you to sign their engagement letter?
That's the other thing that should be clear, is that the engagement of the auditor is a direct responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, as is the municipal attorney.
It's an annual thing.
And it's an annual thing.
There's no chance for debores?
Well, you can do what we did, which is to seek bids, but you're going to sign an engagement letter each year.
Thank you, Nancy.
Did those other documents get sent down for selection?
Yeah, they did.
Okay, good.
I think. All right. Excuse me. We're at a meeting here. Next, consideration of RSU 14 and municipal reference warrants for June 10, 2014 election. Louise?
This is just a formality, to be able to create a posting for the announcement of these elections. Town meeting will be June 3, 7:00 p.m. at Jordan Small Gymnasium. The warrants that we're looking at tonight are for the election on June 10, which will be also at Jordan Small in the gymnasium from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you can sign that, then we'll get them up there.
Okay. It'll be signed.
One thing we don't have, though, we don't have the school warrants, correct?
Correct. The school board has to get those to me and post haste, hopefully.
So the form of the motion would be to approve the town warrants and to authorize the Board of Selectmen because of the lack of another meeting between now and the posting deadline, to sign those school warrants outside the meeting?
Correct.
That was the best we could come up with, working together. We are going to see that the school meets our deadlines moving forward, as they have in the past. They've changed their support staff, and for whatever reason, didn't make the deadline.
Well, it's kind of a mixture of opposing deadlines, I don't, opposing is probably the wrong word, but the school board obviously has their own schedule, as do the Selectmen here.
Right, but my point to the superintendent is they need to meet our deadlines.
Good luck.
And they will. They have in the past, and they will in the future.
Yeah. Also, there's going to be, I might as well announce it now, a school board meeting on May 28, which is a public hearing for their budget, and all are welcome to attend at Wyndham High School, starting at 6:30, I believe.
Louise, does Wyndham vote on their school budget in the fall? Or are they?
No, they'll, June.
They're June, as well?
Yeah, they vote their candidates, their officers, in November.
Okay. But the budget is June, just the same as us?
Yep.
Just makes the timing interesting. That's all.
I make a motion to approve the warrant as presented, with the addition that when the school's actual signable warrant gets here, that the board sign it at town hall.
Second.
And with that, well, basically, their warrant is just to get the.
For posting.
For posting, and it puts the number on the ballot, right?
Correct.
So if folks have an absentee, want to vote absentee, and their budget hasn't been approved yet, how does that work?
Okay, the public hearing is the 28th. I can start processing absentee ballots for that budget referendum question on the 29th.
What other, but the absentee ballots for town will be available before that?
Right now.
Or will you hold everything?
Right, right now.
Yeah.
Now, people can come in and either telephone or come in, and we can mail them as of the date that they can go out.
Okay.
So they can sign up for them now, and then we'll mail them the ballots at the appropriate time.
Can I ask a question? I just, it's just an interesting choice that they've made to leave such little time and.
It's the RSU law.
So.
Yep.
So the Board of Selectmen should come in immediately following the public hearing to sign the warrant, correct?
I think they can sign it as soon as I get it in my hands. And I'm not just sure when that's going to be.
And you don't know when that is, though?
I don't yet.
Okay. Well, we're going to make sure that we don't have this issue moving forward. I don't know why they're unaware of our timelines, but we've not had this problem in the past, so we'll work with them.
It's hard for the citizens.
I know. Well, we had to have a, Sam and I had a logistics talk about this the other day to come up with a workaround, and I have spoken with the superintendent, and we're going to somehow figure a way to avoid this next year.
Yeah, I just, I don't think it's, it's not about us.
Correct.
Not our notification. This is their choice to have a budget hearing in the end of May, when the election is 14 days later, and Louise is stuck with all this extra work.
That's crazy.
Actually, Louise, only stuck with all this extra work for another month, but, which is sad, but that's another story. But in terms of the citizens, it's so inconvenient if you want to vote absentee.
Somebody has a comment here. Please.
I believe Louise just mentioned it's the RSU law, it's the timing. I'm sorry, Grace Levitt, Raymond Hill Road.
You don't know, Peter?
Excuse me? I believe it's the law. Other school budgets are voted on at that date as well. It's not convenient, I understand, but that's the process that went into effect with that whole referendum process. That, actually, it's not the RSU law, it's the referendum law, I believe. So the fact that we used to just have to go to a budget hearing, and a budget vote at a meeting, was changed quite a few years ago now, so that is a two-pronged process. So then you also then have to put a ballot out and have a referendum. So that's not the school's decision to have to delay things by any stretch. I don't think they have any latitude, not to mention, the budget process is always delayed because of waiting for state funding, et cetera. So, correct me, Louise, on anything I've said that's inaccurate, but it just sounded like there was blame being put on the school district not making it convenient for voters, and their hands are pretty well-tied with some of the processes in place that were decided on by the state.
I'm not sure that's the case. We'll investigate that. They've been able to meet the deadlines in the past, and so, you know, I think there's a way for us to coordinate and work together.
Perhaps for the warrant, I guess? I don't know the technicalities of it.
I'm talking about the warrants.
Right, okay.
Just the warrants.
But it was intimated that the budget hearing was being scheduled late, and that that was inconvenient, so we couldn't actually vote on the budget.
No, I'm talking about just the warrants.
I was just trying to clarify that point.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I know I've been to the budgets, but I couldn't remember when they were, it just, yeah.
The budget hearing is done by RSU law.
Okay.
It's the way it originally was set up. And I can tell you, the clerks don't like it.
Yeah. Any other questions? Anybody, any comments?
Yeah. Motion second.
Moved in second, and all in favor? Good, thank you. The next issue, or the next item, is consideration of amendment to the Board of Selectmen bylaws. That is something, since it is the, to the Board of Selectmen bylaws, it's something that requires more than, I think, just three Selectmen. Two Selectmen are missing now. I would like to have at least four, and hopefully have a full board at the next meeting, so I am going to recommend that we table that till the next meeting. Motion table?
Take it.
Call in favor? Thank you. Okay. H., update on community park project bond issue and reconsideration of warrant article. Vote. Danielle Loring, please.
So recently, we just got our environmental assessment back from our engineering firm, Sbagotekniks, and we learned that we're not going to be able to put a community park down on Egypt Road. And the reason being is that there are quite a bunch of wetlands and vernal pools. Though this is sad for the community park project, this is, there's a silver lining. It means that, you know, even though this was a former landfill site, that this is actually a very active and healthy breeding environment for the wood frogs and the salamanders and. and other, you know, amphibious species. I actually went to one of the sidewalks, and it was actually a very cool and interesting experience to see how it is that they go about it. So a wetland is any area that has significant standing water for more than a brief period of time. It will eventually dry out, so we had to go at this time of year so he could flag it and show that when it did get warmer and it wasn't gone where these areas were. And I remember, looking at him one point, I was like, there's, you know, a bunch of standing water, but I don't see any frogs, but we can hear them. They sound like little quacking ducks. So, he's like, well, they must be in another spot. So, come up over the ridge, and there was just this giant pond. So, in that giant pond, were about 150 egg masses for wood frogs and about, I think, 20 egg masses for salamanders, and each has a threshold that once you hit that threshold, it becomes significant. So as I said, sad for the community park, but very good news for, you know, wildlife in general. We also saw some clear water streams and beavers out there, so, once again, very healthy environment. One of the things that I would like to request is that I bring this property forward to the Conservation Commission to see if there's any sort of walking trails and other passive activities that we can do there, as well as conservation efforts, and maybe offer this site to the state or the Boy Scouts to do educational components, to, so that they can show what a vernal pool looks like, or get some merit badges, you know, so. So I request that. We didn't use, you know, out of the 27,500 that was allocated for the engineering for our IRT projects, we used a very insignificant amount to accomplish this, so we'll be able to reallocate those funds towards our permitting for the remaining projects that are viable. So, you know, I thank you guys for your support, and as I said, sad for community park, yay for frogs, so.
I would recommend that she go forward with her plan for the Boy Scouts, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, yeah, it's town-owned land.
Yeah.
We can use it, absolutely, or encourage others to. I found it interesting, Danielle, in the packet that they provided with the pictures, is it's obvious that some of those holes, pools, whatever we want to call them, are totally man-made.
Yes.
And they were made when we closed the dump?
Yes.
In the 80s. And however long it's been since then, they have been taken over and reestablished by the critters.
Absolutely.
You know, and you think, might have been different if they had leveled it, you know, back when they closed the dump, but it is what it is.
Right.
30 years later, it is peeper heaven at the moment.
And the thing is, is we were shocked, because if you go down in there, you'll notice that when you first head in, along the sides of the road, the pictures that we took were all from the road and things like that. So it's very nutrient-poor soil, gravelly, you know, we were expecting this kind of be, plus we'd talked to our forester, and I said, so what do you expect out here? He goes, well, when you drive in, far away, drive, on your left, it's wet, and there's beavers out there. So I was not surprised about the beavers, but he said on the right, you know, you're dry, and kind of gave me a schematic. The thing is, he'd walked it in the fall, outside of this vernal pool time, so he wouldn't have been able to give us the heads up on that. But then, when, once we get the information, it was clear, but, you know, so, all interesting is, it helps the town now to realize how to utilize that property moving forward. It said, I'm, I think it's a good spot for passive walking trails and other, you know, very blatant activities.
I want to just move forward and explore that, Danielle. That's a very good idea. Okay.
So Sam, given this disappointing information, as a member of the prevailing side, I'd like to make a motion, we remove Article 45 from the town warrant at this point, and there's no reason to have it on the warrant or for consideration.
I agree.
Second.
All in favor?
Comment?
Public comment, yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
Charles Levitt, East Raymond, I would just like to say, this is great to know that the TAD polls have a vote in the town of Raymond, and this project, ill-advised as it was, has met its fate, as did the project over here behind the Grange Hall, when we knew they were wetlands and probably an inappropriate place for that type of endeavor. Now, if we can only give the non-residents taxpayers who live in the shorelands in the town of Raymond the same respect, and give them a little bit of voice in how we treat the shorelands in the town of Raymond, as we did the TAD polls, we'd probably go a long way as a community. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
Frank McDermott, McDermott Road, Raymond. Very disappointed that we are not going to be able to go ahead with this project at the present time, but I would suggest that we continue to look for a place to host this kind of facility for the town of Raymond. One of the things you have happening in this town is we are having fewer and fewer children. And the worst thing that could happen to any town is to have no children. When you get to that point, the town is dead, and we have to do things that are going to attract people and people with children to our community. I was thinking about where we might look, and one of the places that I think would be ideal, if we could explore it, would be to use Tassel Top. We have over 40 acres down there. We're looking for 18 to 20 acres to build the recreational fields. We'd have to deal with the state, we'd have to deal with lands for main futures, but it's worth doing. I just don't want people to use the emphatic no up front. I think it's worth exploring to see if Tassel Top might be a viable site to put in athletic fields.
Thank you. Yes?
Peter Levitt, Tulleva Road. Obviously, I'm not here to speak about the advantages and disadvantages of the proposed plan. I've got my own thoughts on that, but I will tell you that I did get the opportunity to watch the select board meeting when this was discussed with the Sibego Technics fellow here, and that he got to that point about the vernal pools and the fact that really the only way to cost-effectively do that is when there's water on the ground, versus to try and do topographical readings and the like. I will tell you that if you review, and perception is reality, if you review the video, what you'll see is that there's actually an exchange between a select board member and the gentleman from Sibego Technics, and about him rolling his eyes when the advisory person from Sibego Technics talked about vernal pools. You know, I've been accused at times of being a tree hugger, I have to tell you. About the only time I hug a tree is just before I cut it down to put it in my stove or to use building material, but I do appreciate the resource. But I think that in general, that's what comes across. There was this rolling of the eyes, and there was a comment about, oh, and then the old little theories are going to fly up, and, you know, the fact about tadpoles and whatever. What I can tell you is that that is the most sensitive measure of our impact on the environment, and you really want to be able to respect it. Also, what I'd suggest to everyone here is that really it's the state that's not letting us do that. So it's regulation, and sometimes regulation is burdensome, but sometimes it's necessary. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Next, we have on the agenda...
We've got to vote, Sam.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's been motioned in second, and we're ready. I think.
All in favor?
Yeah, there's a new warrant packet, warrant sheet to sign as well.
I think I may have sent that down inadvertently.
Yep, he's got it stacked over here.
They're all attached together, so you already have that, I think.
We had on the, have on the agenda executive sessions, actually, to cover two issues, and with the number of people in the audience tonight, I'm going to put the executive session as the last issue, so that nobody has to wait out here while we go in there and jabber. So next will be public comment. Opening it now.
Bruce Tupper, 118 Valley Road, also the chief of the Raymond Fire and Rescue Department. I'd like to thank the board, Dawn, for your support and direction with the ongoing projects that we have, and our RFD department members for their hard work and ongoing dedication to service the citizens. I wanted to speak tonight to address the citizens' concern referenced to our radio tower project and hope that I could put these misconceptions to rest. This is part of an ongoing project of upgrades to our radio system since 2004 to correct our known radio issues. The issue is getting vital communications to all the units on the emergency scene and dispatch simultaneously with reliability, and this is critical. The issue is more often than not cited as a major or contributing factor in most firefighter injuries and deaths by NIOSH and the NFPA. We have researched these options, or all of our options, including tower rental for the existing towers, cell phones, satellites, satellite phones, UHF radios. These cures either further diminish or complicate our safety of our members. Cell and satellite phones limit communications capabilities greatly, and neither of those are recognized by the NFPA as a standard for on-scene emergency communications. All of these come with a substantial and ongoing and uncontrolled cost to the taxpayer, something we wish to avoid. This tower project is necessary. Our radio system engineers that work for our town, that are on our department and have done studies, have done coverage studies, and have figured out by these coverage studies that we will get dramatic improvement to our system by using the site on Valley Road due to its elevation and location. The cost of this project is lower today than it will be if we wait to do it without the military's free labor to install the underground utilities, tower bases, and roadways, et cetera. Our department protects the citizens of this town, and we need to provide them with reliable communications. They experience calculated risks performing the job that they do, and they put themselves out there. Communication should not be one of those risks that they experience. The tower project is a necessity. I am a taxpayer in the town. I live on a tight budget, and I still support the project. I don't gain anything out of this pride-wise, other than protecting and serving the citizens of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Charles Levitt, East Raymond, I'm glad to see that the board at its last meeting expanded public comment to include letters from the public. In this case, it was the Boy Scouts and Kevin Gagnon, a developer in town. I'm sure the letter sent last week to the board from Mr. John E. Walt commending the Raymond Planning Board's denial of the Town of Fry Island Corporation Park and Side project on Raymond Cape will be also read into the record. That letter also asked for the support of the Board of Selectmen to endorse and support the planning board's decision. There were comments made in the last meeting, and I just heard it again a minute ago, about the board, that the board, I believe, has to address. Mr. Tarbox's letter from the Boy Scouts indicated that the National Guard services provided to them were pro bono. Now, the Boy Scouts are nonprofit and pay no property taxes in Raymond, so it's understandable they consider all services provided by local, state, and federal authorities as free. We just heard again that it's free labor. Make no mistake, we're paying for this labor. Anyone who pays a federal income tax is paying for the labor of the Guard, so it's neither free nor pro bono. Mr. Gagnon's letter, and that letter also included discussion about a neighbor fight on the River Road, and I really do encourage the board to stay out of neighbor fights. It's not a good place to go. Mr. Gagnon's letter, I think exceeded the three-minute limit, so I'm glad the board is not holding strongly to that any longer.
We are.
And, oh, I think that letter went over, so maybe we all should just write five-minute letters. Anyway, it mentioned that, again, this idea that the way we're going to grow Raymond is to grow town government with more staff to do things that we've already paid for. We have a TIF, and Mr. Gagnon seemed to believe that there was no TIF in the town of Raymond. Again, that TIF is probably over 30 years, going to generate $4 million. That's supposed to go back into the business district to enhance economic and community development. So the fact that we've kind of used that TIF as a budgetary mechanism, and I've done it myself on this board in the past as a gimmick, so to speak, like an EBT card, to shift things around that aren't really related to economic development, should be addressed by the board, and again, should be addressed by any committee or task force that's looking at the town of Raymond and what it's committed in taxpayer dollars to the improvement of this community. And then finally, Raymond TV broadcast's schedule is up to date to February 20th, 2014. There are three Board of Selectmen meetings and two Budget Finance Committee meetings from March and April that have not been rebroadcast yet. The town meeting is June 3rd, three weeks from today, and none of these meetings have been rebroadcast. So I don't know if that's intentional, or if we're still having technical difficulties, but I think we ought to straighten out that situation, have five meetings not rebroadcast regarding the tax referendum that will come up to the people in this town, where we're going to spend $500 million over the LD1 limit and the undesignated fund balance. I think it's serious, needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Peter Levitt, Tulleva Road. Just a point of information, when Ralph quoted Donald Rumsfeld, there are no knowns, there are known unknowns, and there are unknown unknowns, as far as referring to the financial future of the town of Raymond. I understand that what he was referring to is the explanation as to why there were weapons of mass destruction in Iraq. And actually, he stole that saying. It came out of the 1950s, the Blue Book, on US Air Force's investigation into unidentified flying objects, and that's what the original quote came from. So be careful who you quote.
I wish you had heard that, Ralph.
That's what my college mentor told me all the time. Be careful who you quote. Any others? All right. We're going to move on to selectman comment. Yes, Teresa?
I just want everybody to make sure that they're watching the school board website. The school board actually did a vote amongst themselves, and the top three choices out of all the school boards is building a new school without school funding. So it's either going to be renovate Jordan Small Middle School and build a new Wyndham Middle School in Wyndham that both towns will pay for. Another one is consolidate on some property in between, or consolidate and build on Wyndham land. And the biggest thing to remember is, we pay 45% of that school because it's over EPS. And I think that people need to be watching real closely as to what's going on down there, because it's going to be costing us a lot of money. And I think it's been almost two months. I've asked for Katrina Sangster to rerun numbers, because I've been talking to the state of Maine, and we are basing our numbers that we pay on 2006 figures instead of 2010 figures. And I still haven't gotten anything, so, just, everybody needs to educate themselves on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mike?
Monthly update from the library. Last night, main author, Paul Dorian, spoke at the library to a packed house. I believe it was almost standing room only. I think they pulled every chair they had out for him, so that was a wonderful turnout. Tomorrow, Wednesday, the 14th, at noon, the New Crafting Club is meeting. Drop by to share your crafts. This Sunday is game day at 1:00 PM. If you're involved with the reading group there, the May book group selection is The Language of Flowers, and that's on Wednesday, May 5/28. The annual plant sale, for anybody who needs some plants, these are, this is a great fundraiser for the library. The annual plant sale is in June, on the 6th and 7th, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the library. Plenty of time to get those plants in and going. Also, there's a, there's a Maine Wildlife Pass that's available to use for Raymond patrons at the library. So if folks are looking for a way to save a little bit of money to go to the Maine Wildlife Park in Gray, that would be a great way to do it. And also a reminder that there are new library hours. The library is now open... reminder that there are new library hours. The library is now open Thursday from 2:00 to 7:00, which is a brand-new day, new time. So, again, the added, added day of Thursday from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. Thank you, Sam.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I just want everybody to introduce Deb Duchesne. She's running for Budget Finance. I don't know if you guys knew her or not.
Didn't know that.
Yes, she's going, the one-year term.
I'm going to try it.
Yes.
Get my feet wet, anyway.
Good. Is there no more questions? Town manager report?
We have a few meeting dates to confirm. The next regular meeting date, June 17th. That's fine with me. Does that work for everyone?
Don't know yet. I think so.
Okay. Well, while you're checking, Louise has already mentioned this, but I'll move on to the annual town meeting, June 3rd, at the Jordan Small Middle School Gym at 7:00 PM. We also have our, on June 10th, our referendum vote, also at the Jordan Small Middle School Gym from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Yes?
Also, candidate tonight on the 20th next week, here at the broadcast studio, 7:00 PM.
Sunday?
Thank you.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 20th?
Yep.
I do have one more thing that's not listed here, and this is, I guess, an issue that the chief would want me to, I think I've sent out the bid summary already on the 2015 Public Safety Utility Vehicle. So, you're evaluating those bids? Correct. And we do intend to make an award on that probably prior to the next meeting in order to get the order placed for the vehicle. And so, you'll be making a recommendation on the vehicle that most closely meets the specifications and your needs, correct? Correct. We end up with two vehicles that are outside the parameters of the bid, and then two that are arguably inside, only one being a 2015. Correct. So, but you'll get that back to me, and I'll make the, make the award, the order. So.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
And we're still waiting on the selected meeting date?
Sam, we should probably mention that the public hearing that was tentatively scheduled, or was scheduled for the 22nd
Yes.
for the recreation park is now canceled.
Now canceled, yeah.
And June 17th works for me.
All right.
So, that's all I have. Fiscal warrants?
I'd like to make a motion dated 5/13/2014 for payroll expense summaries in the amount of $54,912.72.
All in favor?
Second.
We'll do it backwards like that.
That's all right.
And motion to accept the Treasuries Re. warrant of 5/13/2014 for $163,278.17.
Second.
All in favor? That's fine. Now, we will move into executive session to consider two issues, and...
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. One, MRSA subsection 4056F and 4056E.
Second. All in favor? Motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
All in favor? We're out.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the code enforcement officer to draft a tentative consent agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
I would like to take a moment to congratulate eight folks who were selected to receive scholarships this year. They will be contacted in the near future. Andrew Bennett, Jonathan Brockelbank, Emily Callahan, Jared Nado, Jaren Nado, I believe, Morgan Richmond, Eric Shadler with an L? Shadler.
Shadler.
Shadler, Shannon Sutton, and Ryan Tupper. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Great. Thank you very much.